Good evening. The time is 7 o'clock. It's June 7th, and we've got the regular session number four of the Raytown Board of Aldermen. We're going to start with opening session at this time. We're going to ask the invocation to be given by Deanna Hayden, Southwood Church of Nazareth. Welcome.
If you would, with me, recognize the moment of silence for the police officer that was killed as he was trying to provide help for those in Joplin, Missouri. We'll have a moment of silence before the invocation. Lord God, as we come before you tonight, and we come together, for this time, Lord, we ask that you would put your hand on the family of this officer, bless them, give them comfort as they grieve, and, Lord, allow the work that he was trying to do be accomplished, that the people who were victims down in Joplin, Lord, would be able to resume life, and that they would be able to heal, and allow things to get back to some kind of normal life. Lord, we're here tonight to talk about a lot of things and make a lot of decisions, and we just ask that you would give us humble hearts, and that we would be able to hear your voice above our own. Lord, as there are good things happening here in Raytown, we ask that you would bless the things that are happening, like the Summer Fest this weekend, Lord, that it would have good weather, that we'd have a good time together, and that you would somehow be glorified in all that we do. We ask all this tonight in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, each and every public or which stands one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. One of our proud moments is before us, and we're going to, at this time, ask the chief to come forward to swear in police officers Joe Holt and Miles Spandau.
Thank you, Mayor and Board of Aldermen. I'd like to introduce two officers. Actually, they were here in January, and they've hung with us at Blue River Academy and graduated, which is a good thing. Joe Holt, 33 years old, he currently resides in Oak Grove, graduated from Blue Springs South High School, and he's an electrician by trade, and I understand he's done some work for Tom Watson. All right? So, might be able to help up upstairs, sir. Joe graduated from Blue River Police Academy on May 23rd. Joe's been married to his wife Chrissy for 11 years. They have two children, Kaylee, seven, and Gavin, one-year-old, and his wife is currently pregnant with their third child. He enjoys fishing, bonfires, and spending time with his family. Joe Holt. Miles Spandau is 23 years old and currently resides in Lee Summit, Missouri. He graduated from Pleasant Hill High School and entered the Missouri National Guard Military Police. While in the military police, he was stationed in Guatemala, Oceano, and Haiti. Miles earned two Army accommodations for saving lives in Guatemala and Oceano. Miles also received the Top Gun Award. Miles was hired by Raytown in October 2010 and worked in detention. He was promoted to police officer in January 2011 and went to Blue River Academy. Miles was president of his class and received the Top Gun Award in his class. Miles, Father Stephen Spandau, who many of you know, was police officer here for 20 years, and he retired in March 2007. Miles is currently dating Jennifer Oljack, cardiovascular recovery unit we're in at St. Luke's East. He enjoys cooking, fishing, and spending time with his family and friends. I'm curious if you wouldn't mind, I'm going to kind of, obviously, they've been sworn in, they've been working, and just going to read their commissions. To all you who see these presence greeting, know you that reposing special trust and confidence in the valor, fidelity, and abilities of Joe Holt and Miles Spandau by James Elaine, Chief of Police, do appoint them officers in the Raytown, Missouri Police Department the 7th day of June 2011, and commission them to exercise the powers of office. This commission is to continue to enforce during the pleasure of the Chief. Ms. Newton, if you'd...
Officers, on behalf of the Board and the citizens, thank you for choosing Raytown. You both are well-qualified from your tests and exams, and the academy speaks highly of you, obviously, as the chief mentioned. We welcome you to this fine group of officers, and this, we believe, to be the best police department in the metropolitan area. Thank you.[399.12][399.12](APPLAUSE).
Thank you, Mayor and Board of Aldermen. I just want to take one minute to tell, kind of fill you in, I know that did the mayor today. We thwarted first-degree burglary today, where four subjects were apprehended, two in Raytown and two in Kansas City, and one was arrested in a Kansas City hotel with an extensive search through all four floors of the building, and one of those individuals was wanted for homicide and had a gun on him. So, just wanted to bring up to him, tell the officer real proud of them today and for the work they did and the arrests they made in a...
We continue, Chief, to be thankful for your guidance and the training that these officers have, and we're thankful for their safety.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Alderman Lightfoot?
Here.
Alderman Mock?
Here.
Alderman Van Bussker?
Here.
Alderman Ertz?
Here.
Alderman Melson? Alderman White? Alderman Hamilton?
Here.
Alderman Azier?
Here.
Alderman Pardue?
Here.
Alderman Kramer?
Here.
Alderman Melson notified me that she would be absent tonight, so she's excused. This time, we're going to open the floor up to public comments. I've got Vicky Turnbow first, our chamber president. I have a stinking suspicion she's going to talk to us about Summer Fest.
Good evening, Mayor and Board of Aldermen. How are you all today? Hopefully, doing well? First of all, the first thing I'd like to do is, I would like to publicly thank Beth Lynn, the current Community Development Director, for all of her hard work, both through the city and with the events involving the community and the chamber. Even though I am very sad we're leaving, I'm also very happy for her. Her new community is very, very lucky to have her, and thank you very much for everything, okay? Okay, now that I got that out of the way, I was going to do that. And I'm not going to be here at the next Alderman meeting, so I wanted to do it today. And then, second of all, as a quick reminder, Raytown Summer Fest and Barbecue Cook-Off is well getting in the final stages, and will be Friday, June 10th, and Saturday, June 11th. I left a schedule of some of the events on all of yours place for you to see, and I want to take this opportunity to thank the city, police, fire, MS, Parks, Public Works. Tony Mesa, by the way, has been amazing, I want to let you know that. The school district, and of course, the chamber members for everything. All of us working together makes this a true community event. The tent is up, the carnival's in, it's, we're ready. We're ready for a festival and a barbecue cook-off. Do any of you have any questions?
Is it true the temperature is going to be in the mid-to-upper 70s and no rain?
Rain is four letters, by the way, so we don't mention that word, but, you know, I got a, the carnival sent me something today, and it said, "Low 80s, sunshine, Friday and Saturday." So, and then, for the community, if they need some information, they could go to the chamber's website, which is raytownchamber.com, click on Summer Fest, and all the events are listed there as well.
Perfect.
Okay?
Thank you.
You all very much.
Thanks, Vicky. Next, we've got Andy Whitman. Welcome, Andy.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Board of Aldermen. I didn't expect Vicky to get done so quickly. A bridge to nowhere was proposed in Alaska, was vetoed by then-Governor Saleh Palin as wasteful spending. Now, an ordinance proposes a 700 mile bike lane along 350 Highway, which connects to no other bike lane. Since this board is proposing a bike lane to nowhere, for what purpose? There is state or federal funding available, but it will cost the citizens of Raytown over $200,000, and I add, the citizens of the country, another $400,000, entirely wasteful. Yes, you must spend grant money or lose it. This is Obama money, and the way the dictator buys votes. Wasn't it previously stated at this board that there could be no bike lane on the IHOP property because there was no bike traffic on 350 Highway? Doesn't make sense to have a bike lane if there's no bike traffic, does it? I favor bike lanes if they serve the intended purpose. I would like to see a city of bike lanes leading somewhere. Downtown needs development. Would be more productive to have bike lanes to downtown, the library, the post office, bowling department, strip mall, 63rd Raytown Road, and City Hall. In other words, let's be productive with what our money and give people a way to get to downtown where we want them to be. And also, it'd give our seniors a chance from the apartments and from this area to get to do shopping. Rather than wasting money on a bike lane to nowhere, I suggest the money be put to street repairs and our streetlights. There's things your voters have asked for. Propose bike lane is idiotic, and ask each of you to vote "no," and say "no" the same way Sergeant Walker would make it clear himself. And actually, I don't think this should even get to a vote. It should be tabled or totally not brought forward. Unfortunately, I've seen a publication Beth Lynn has resigned to take another job. I'm going to miss her. I'm sorry to see her leave. She has accomplished much while employed by the city of Raytown, in her department responsible for the vacant properties ordinance, bringing several new businesses into Raytown. I'm sure she will do a top-notch job for the city of Edgerton. I wish her success in her new job. As I said in passing when the department heads leave, the city should look at downsizing because the city is top-heavy with management. $100,000 per year could be saved. My assumption from post office figures is that $150,000 would be saved per year because benefits represent 50% of salary. What would $150,000 per year do? Sell marked streetlights and dark hoods, repair or maintain the streets, add two police officers, or three city workers of non-management type? If the position is retained, her replacement should be required to live in the city of Raytown as the condition of employment. If department heads lived in Raytown, they would live under the same conditions thus far, and have a better understanding of what life is like here. Those who don't live in Raytown are disconnected. The real situation, all department heads were at one time required to live in the city, and the requirement should be re-implemented. As contracts for new or new people are hired, it's a good time to implement a policy of living within the city limits. We have a city administrator who's granted a waiver due for good cause, due to his daughter being in high school. Same administrator was granted a waiver again because house prices are down. I don't consider a second waiver to be for good cause. This is a period of time he could buy a home in Raytown very cheaply. I assume when the waiver expires, his excuse will be Raytown homes are too expensive. Let's cancel that waiver and allow him one year to move to Raytown. This is ridiculous. Thank you.
Thanks, Andy. Would anyone else in the audience like to address the Board on items that the Board can take action upon? Once, twice? Okay, moving on. Vicky spoke very well of the Raytown Summer Fest, and this is an event that is for the entire community. This is our chance to get out. We expect it to be good weather. We also have just a number of opportunities for the youth and for the adults, and we'd like to see the community out, getting to know each other, getting to meet and greet, and for that to be a festive occasion for all of the citizens. That morning also, Saturday, is the Raytown Parks Department Fishing Derby, and if you want to get a good spot on that lake, you better get there by 9:30 is my suggestion, because there'll be kids lined up around that lake, and it's quite a fun time to see those kids sometimes catching their first fish, as my granddaughter did last year. So, it's a fun time. I think also, if you're really desperate for something to do, and you want to get some good basketball in you, there will be a not-so-fun event happening out in Blue Springs, where the Blue Springs mayor has challenged myself and several other mayors to a basketball shootout Saturday afternoon. So, if you're really desperate for something to do, you can come out and watch this mayor probably finish third out of three people in that basketball shootout. But it's been fun, and Carson Ross and I mess around a lot with each other, and he's put this challenge on me, so we'll give it a shot here. That is going to be at 12 o'clock on, I think it's actually, we're going to warm up at 12, and the event's at 12:30, like you're going to be there, Pat, I'm sure. Yeah, just in case somebody really doesn't want to go. Anyway, a lot of fun, and that's symbolic of what's happening in the region. And while our friends in Riverside tomorrow will be mourning the death of one of their police officers, and our hearts go out to them as well, we're also thinking about those other municipalities that we team with quite often, who are expecting flooding waters to come their way soon. So, a lot is upon us. I'm thankful for what this city has, for the administration we have, and for the Board of Aldermen we have, that professionally and responsibly take actions that benefit our citizens. So, with that, Mahesh, I'm going to turn the floor over to you for communication from the city administrator.
Good evening, Mayor Bauer and Board of Aldermen. I think a couple of items that I wanted to touch base is already taken care of, so few things I'll just mention. Follow-up session for the Board of Aldermen, goal-setting session, will be held, or will be, on June 14th at 6:00 PM at the fire station number one, the same place where we had our first session. Also, when we talk about ceremony or celebration, soon in the near future, we will have ceremony for the completion of the project at the Minor Smith Park, as well as Public Works Facility that is going under renovation. More detail will come later on. Also, with the weather that we got, our super splash swimming pool is doing wonderful in terms of people attending and enjoying the facility that we have in our town. That will conclude my report for tonight.
Very good. Community reports? I'm going to start with Ms. White on municipal. No reports? Mr. Mock?
The only thing is, there was this Saturday, 11:00, 3 o'clock, will be the Raytown Burger Rats Arena for the kids. Age is five, 12, $5 entrance fee. Oh, little hoop contest, puppet shows, clown, winter glove, days painting crafts, so that's something else for the kids in Raytown to be doing over the weekend. If we have their summer fest, they can have a summer fest, that'd be great.
Very good. Mr. Pardue?
The Human Relations Commission will be meeting on the 16th here at City Hall at 6:00 PM.
Mr. Kramer, anything to report from the Parks Department?
Nothing to report from the Parks Department, and as Mahesh said, the bridge at Minor Park will be celebrating the reopening of that.
And what I have on that is July 9th at 11:00 o'clock.
No, 11:30, sir.
11:30?
Yes, sir. Tentative.
Check with your local papers on that.
You're right.
Tentatively planned for, again, July 9th, 11:00 or 11:30. Check with your paper, call the Parks Department. That's an opportunity for those that enjoy our parks, and there are certainly many of you that do that, to get out and celebrate that bridge opening. Ms. Azier? You or Mr. Lightfoot, anything on legislative?
Nothing from real legislative.
Mr. Lightfoot? Any other community reports?
Finance Committee will be meeting soon, but I'm not, I don't have a date in mind yet.
Okay, thank you, sir. I forgot about that. Okay, any other community reports? Moving on to the legislative session, we have the consent agenda before us, just the one item, the meeting minutes from the last meeting. We hear a motion to approve the consent agenda.
To move.
And they wonder why I can't figure out who motioned and who seconded. The loudest voice I heard on this side was Christine, who gets the motion to approve the consent agenda, seconded by Mr. Hamilton. Any discussion before we vote on that item? Call the vote, please.
Alderman White?
Yes.
Alderman Hamilton?
Yes.
Alderman Lightfoot?
Yes.
Alderman Mock?
Yes.
Alderman Van Bussker?
Yes.
Alderman Ertz?
Yes.
Alderman Azier?
Yes.
Alderman Pardue?
Yes.
Alderman Kramer?
Yes.
Moving to the regular agenda, I'll ask the clerk to perform the reading on item number two, please.
A resolution accepting a reimbursement from Direct Action Resource Center in the amount of $7,260, and amending the fiscal year 2010-2011 budget.
Our Chief of Police, Jim Lynch, anything to add, sir?
The only thing, it's a reimbursement for some work that I'd like to plug Lieutenant Husbuth again. He goes down there and is at the Little Rock Arkansas location, and he's developed some other programs down there, and we wouldn't get this money without Lieutenant Husbuth's input into the training down there, and being able to get some free training for our guys down there.
Questions? Mr. Van Bussker.
I'd like to make a motion that the resolution be approved.
Second.
Mr. Van Bussker has the motion to approve, seconded by Mr. Ertz on that. Any discussion before we vote? Call the vote, please.
Alderman Van Bussker?
Yes.
Alderman Ertz?
Yes.
Alderman Pardue?
Yes.
Alderman Hamilton?
Yes.
Alderman Lightfoot?
Yes.
Alderman Kramer?
Yes.
Alderman Azier?
Yes.
Alderman White?
Yes.
Alderman Mock?
Yes.
Item number three, please.
An ordinance authorizing and approving a municipal agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission Transportation Enhancement Funds Program for bicycle, pedestrian, trail, along 350 Highway.
Mr. Noel, as our Public Works Director, anything to add, sir?
I just would like to point out that we did provide some more information in the RBA this time that presents some of the information that led up to this submitted grant, the study for 350 Highway, and then also, it elaborates more on some of the funding that will be required for this project. Here to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. This is the second reading, so I'll entertain questions, Mr. Noel, or action on this matter. Mr. Azier?
Motion to approve, please.
Mr. Azier's got the motion to approve, seconded by Mr. Pardue. Discussion before we vote on item number three. Mr. Ertz?
Yeah, the question, when this sidewalk pedestrian path, bicycle path, goes up to connect with the sidewalks that were put in on Blue Ridge Boulevard, it's going to hit, it'll be, the bridge will be overlaid. I know that bridge is coming up this summer. I don't know how all these things tie together. One thing I noticed is when bicycles are going across Blue Ridge, the bridge over 350, the guardrails are very low, and it looks extremely dangerous to me. Is that part of the design when they resurface the bridge to, or is that just the way bridges will be designed out to have maybe a safer, I believe bicycle routes usually have a higher fence, guardrail, whatever you want to call that, or...
I have not researched that particular guardrail height on Blue Ridge Boulevard, where they'll be replacing that bridge, but I know they'll be bringing it up to current standards, because that entire deck will come off, and they'll be rebuilding the entire deck from the steel girders up. So, I will talk to MoDOT about that. I'm not sure if there is any particular increased height requirements, but we can look into that, and we can discuss that with them.
Yeah, there may not be. It just seems to me, when you see a guy that's on a bike that brings him up even higher, and the guardrails are very low, at my age, it looks dangerous, but, you know, but I just wanted to make you aware of it, maybe. Thank you.
Mr. Van Bussker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You'll have to excuse my voice, I'm about to lose it. Some of you might be elated at that, but, yeah. Just to let you know, I'm very much in favor of improvements on our roadways. I really think that's important, and 350 Highway being such a busy roadway, you know, we do have, we have problems with traffic there right now. And we have more pedestrians, it seems like, all the time. And to let you know, too, I applaud our staff for the grants that they've been able to get for us. I think that's important to us. It's done a lot of good things for our city. But I really have reservations about what we're doing to this stretch of roadway. And I was just, I'm on that roadway every day, and I'm there during rush hour traffic every day, and we have a huge volume of traffic that travels that highway. You'll notice the other day, it was backed in the evening, it was backed all the way up to 63rd Street, coming into our city. I've heard people recently talk about, you know, trying to take alternative routes around Raytown so they can avoid that traffic. In the evenings, there's a lot of it, and there's a lot of it in the mornings. But to me, by eliminating the shoulder from the right side of the roadway, I believe we're creating a traffic hazard. It would be impossible for, when that thing is backed up like that, it would be impossible for emergency equipment to get through. Right now, with the shoulder, there is someplace for traffic to go. It can get through. If we do that, it's not going to be able to. If there's an accident, there's no place for that vehicle to go. If there's, if someone's car breaks down, there's no place for it to go, and it's going to create more problems. So, for that reason, I don't think this is, this is a good thing for us to do. In my opinion, if we could leave the shoulder, add a curb next to the shoulder on the right side of the roadway, and then add a walkway next to that, maybe not a 10-foot one, I think that would be an improvement. This, I don't believe, will be an improvement. I think it's going to create some problems. The other thing is the amount of money that we're spending out of pocket, and from the taxpayers of our city, and all of it's tax money, but there's something like $211,000, I think, that will be coming directly out of our coffers. And I really believe there are more important priorities than this right now, where that money could be better utilized. Yeah, I read a, I don't know how many of you got your copy of Governing Magazine, the June 2011 issue? That we all, I think we all get that. There's an interesting article in it, and it's about bicycle battles, and it talks about cities where bicycle lanes are being added that are taken away from the roadway and creating traffic problems, and how that is an issue in apparently more and more cities. The number of bike riders have increased, but it's still not a huge percentage of the population in any, you know, at all, and the traffic is more of a priority. In fact, apparently, some municipalities are being, or cities are being sued because people are trying to get the roadways back to the way they were to accommodate the traffic where bike lanes have been added. So, just something to think about, and you might want to, you might be interested in reading that article. I thought it was very interesting. So, for those reasons, I will not be in favor of this, of accepting this grant or spending our money for this. I think it's the wrong project at the wrong time. I think it's the wrong project at the wrong time, and I don't believe it'll be an improvement. Thank you.
Other comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Kramer?
In regards to that, and as Alderman Van Busker said, I want to thank staff for going out and researching and finding grant money that's available to come to Raytown. And as we all say, if we don't get it, somebody else is going to get it, and gosh, I'm just happy to see it come here. As far as the bicycle lanes, if we can make it pedestrian-friendly along three fifty highway and, you know, not just have people driving their cars in, but walking, riding their bicycles, how we can get them to these businesses, you know, I think it's a great thing. Of course, once again, I'll bring it up, we did a traffic study, or we looked at street lighting, or not street lighting, traffic lighting along Blue Ridge, and we were concerned about the carbon emitting that come from cars because they have to stop, and I can't think of any other cleaner type of transportation than our feet and bicycles. And so, you know, if it encourages people to get their bicycles out and, or walk to head to these businesses, I think that's a great thing. The other thing I want to point out is that those people that are passing through our community, if their car does break down, there's a couple automotive shops along the way, and there are some parts stores there, so maybe that'll help business along there.
Mr. Pardue?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to point out that I've heard from many constituents in our area and Ward One that have mentioned bike lanes and more sidewalks, so I think this is something that is good for the town, and as gas prices are going up, it's just a better way to, or to travel. So I'll be for this and hopefully we can get this passed.
Good, thank you. Other comments? Mr. Mock?
Will there be any landscaping, trees, anything like that?
There will be some landscaping included with the project if we can fit that in the budget.
Do you know about how much?
Right now, we did not include that in the budget. We did include construction inspection, but that's one item that we could switch, do in-house construction inspection, and then provide some for some landscaping.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Noel, unless I'm missing something, we're saying bike lanes, but that seems to be a bit of a misnomer. This is a bike path, if you will, clearly off of the, off of the moving traffic. I don't, I don't follow how there's a bike lane. I wouldn't certainly call it that. And I do see a number of people walking along three fifty, more so than we've experienced in the past. This provides them a safe place to do that as well. We talk about walkable communities, this would be in line with that. We do hear from a number of people talking about bicycle-friendly community. We've also talked about complete streets. We've had all those reports, and this is completely in line with that as far as I can see, so I hope that the council will approve it. Any other comments? Okay, we've got a motion and a second already. If there's no further comments, call the vote, please.
Alderman Azier?
Yes.
Alderman Pardue?
Yes.
Alderman Ertz?
Yes.
Alderman Hamilton?
Yes.
Alderman Van Busker?
No.
Alderman White?
Yes.
Alderman Mock?
Yes.
Alderman Kramer?
Yes.
Alderman Lightfoot?
Yes.
Item number four, please.
An ordinance granting to Missouri Gas Energy a division of Southern Union Company, a Delaware corporation operating a gas distribution system in the city of Raytown, Missouri, its successors or assigns a franchise to operate a natural gas distribution plant and system in said city and relating thereto.
Mr. Willarth, anything to add on this subject, sir?
Not in addition to the material I presented at the last meeting in which I recommend the renewal of this franchise for a twenty-year supply for the gas energy needs for the city of Raytown. I've been working on negotiations with the attorney from Missouri Gas Energy over the last three months, and I'm pleased with the document we have before you.
Okay, this is the second reading. Are there questions of Mr. Willarth or discussion amongst the board?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Kramer, what did you say, sir?
Yeah.
I missed it.
Motion to approve.
You've got the motion to approve, seconded by Mr. Hamilton. We're in the, we're into discussion on item number four with a motion and a second already. Mr. Van Busker.
Well, I think we need to be fully transparent about, you know, what this is exactly. I know it's called a franchise fee. In essence, it is a tax, and in fact, it is called a tax that we're placing on the, on the utility. It is called that there. It's passed on to the consumer, and I think everyone needs to understand that, that, you know, you're paying for this, not the utility company. And so, in reality, it is a tax placed on every taxpayer. We're paying out on every utility, and as utilities go up in cost, your gas prices are higher, your electricity's higher, so on and so forth, you pay more because it's a percentage. This is eight percent on this particular one. And so it's kind of a, you know, it's a good thing for the city because it's kind of a built-in tax increase that we, that we get as utilities increase their prices. And, you know, that's the, kind of the downside for me, but I just, I want everyone to really understand what it is and that you're paying for it. The plus side to this is that it is a consumer-based tax. I'm an opponent, or not an opponent, I'm a proponent of consumer-based taxes. There are way too many taxes we have, income taxes being one of those, where just a few are paying their fair share, or in many times, more than their fair share, and there are many who reap the benefits of that that don't pay any taxes at all. So everyone that's a consumer, in this case, is getting to participate in this. So being, since it is a consumer-based tax, I do support it from that, from that standpoint. So just thought I should try to get that out in the open. I hope, I hope everyone understands my negatives and positives regarding taxes, and especially that type of tax. Thank you.
Mr. Ertz?
As a, it's a franchise fee, and I believe that's quite a bit different than a tax in my mind. I do agree that, yes, it's something that, it gives the, a gas company a right to operate in the city of Raytown, am I correct, Mr. Willarth?
Yes, that's correct.
If they did not operate here, they would not have to pay the franchise fee. The gas company has multiple lines going underneath a lot of our streets all over this town, I believe, of gas pipes that cause the citizens of Raytown grief from time to time. Therefore, they would, they're, they are charged a franchise fee for the right to do business in Raytown. Because they choose, because the state of Missouri allows them to put it as a line item on their bill, that that's the franchise fee, but it is a part of doing business, simply like a franchise that McDonald's had to pay for the franchise to call themselves McDonald's. There's, there is a difference between a franchise fee and a tax in my mind. I do understand what Alderman Van Busker is saying and about being consumer-based, and I completely agree, but I think there is good justification for this, and I thank you for your work you did on negotiating this for the city.
Mr. Azier?
The only comment I would add to that is that, like Alderman Ertz said, it's not just the right to operate a business in Raytown or through Raytown, but also every time that they dig in the holes or cross the streets and do street cuts, we also pay the price. Every time we drive over the brand-new streets, have had a new cut, trench dug through it and new overlay over it. So there's two sides of the coin, and I'd also add that in the last twelve years I've been on the board, I have not watched our city budget go up much. Nothing significant, certainly hasn't kept up with the cost of living. And truthfully, we couldn't operate the city without taxes. So the word tax in itself may sound like a dirty word, but it does provide you snow removal, it keeps your streets up, does pay your streetlight bill for the ones that we do have, and all the other things that we do to provide services like the EMS, fire department, police department, they all take money. So, yes, they are also paid for by taxes, and the money that we will, the small amount of money that we will gather from this right to do business will only help provide the services that people in Raytown do expect to have every day.
Okay, we're on the first round of discussion, starting the second round. Mr. Van Busker.
Yeah, just wanted to add one thing, and as I stated, I will support this since it is a consumer-based tax. But it is, in fact, on, if you'll notice on page two, regarding this issue, at the bottom of the page in last paragraph, section five, it does state, "Said percentage of company's gross receipts is hereby levied and asserted, assessed, I'm sorry, as an occupation and license tax. Company agrees to recognize the same as a valid tax and make said payments during such periods." So it is referred to as a tax, even though when it comes to the consumer, that may change into the word fee, but just, just for clarification of that. Thank you.
Very good. Any further discussion? We do have a motion and a second. No further discussion? Call the vote, please.
Alderman Kramer?
Yes.
Alderman Hamilton?
Yes.
Alderman Van Busker?
Yes.
Alderman Pardue?
Yes.
Alderman Lightfoot?
Yes.
Alderman Mock?
Yes.
Alderman Azier?
Yes.
Alderman Ertz?
Yes.
Alderman White?